We're going to call this meeting to order. Will y'all please rise for the invocation and pledge?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, we want to thank you for this together today. And Father, first off, we want to thank you for the wonderful rain you have sent to us. Lots of prayers answered, and Father, we know there's something that's still missed out. We'd be humbled to fill in the gaps. Fathers, we gather here this evening. Let us have an open and sound mind. Take care of the county's business this evening. Father, we want to be with those that are ill and be with those that need the prayers. Forgive us of our many sins. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, evergreen, absolute flag, standing in Mexico, the Z E S symbol of perfect friendship among united cultures.
First item, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I move to approve.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Second approval of the minutes from October 1st, 2024 regular meeting.
I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor? Any approved? Motion carries. Third, approval of accounts payable and payroll.
Second.
Got a motion in a second to approve accounts payable and payroll? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we are at information or items, a presentation of the biannual economic development report for R C C D C by executive director Jody Diaz.
Welcome. Good evening. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to come by and give an annual update. I don't know how we want to do the slides.
They're up there.
Okay, I didn't know if I needed a clicker. Thank you for allowing me. This is our board. We have myself as the executive director, Eric Scovia is our president, Russen Self, vice president, Bruce Nixon, secretary. I'll give just a little bit. I'm not going to read all the names because I will allow you to do that. But we do have Ms. Kirk on for Roosevelt County and also Ms. Dixon sits on our board. How our board seats work, for every 15,000 that is given, you get a board seat. So City of Portales is the largest funder, Roosevelt County and E N M U. Those are our three major funders for the organization as we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. And then we have local investors as well. I guess I jumped the gun a little bit. There's a little bit more of our stakeholders. So we switched up our banquet a little bit this past year and we had some live auction and a silent auction. So we had some different things donated. Just on here were some of the recipients that either purchased from the banquet or donated something, which also goes into helping with general operations. So we also would like to thank those banquet donors. Just a few things throughout the year that we had this year. Of course, our annual fundraising campaign, which we will do every year. But in August of last year, Jeremy Burma with Modern Woodman, he hosted a small business planning session and that was for free to any small businesses in Roosevelt County. Just a couple of pictures from the banquet. We did use the Yam Theater, so we appreciate the use of that facility. The county, as commissioners are aware of, but anybody new in the audience, Roosevelt County actually donated, or did not donate, let me rephrase that. They gave $15,000 for another facade grant program. We ran one back in 2023. All of the funds were dispersed. We were getting a lot of calls about having another grant program. So we felt that there was really a need in the community for it. And so we ran another rant and 15 applications were approved. The two there, parking lot renovation and then some new signage for downtown business. We had two Lita awards that went through, the Roosevelt County Electric and Enchantment Vineyards were the two Lita awards that were given out. And then also a collaboration of, just a little background on R C C D C, and we will get people say, what does your organization do? So business retention and expansion is one of our largest components because we want to retain all of our local businesses, help them expand if that is something that is in their plans or their goals, but also retention. So I had a meeting up in Clovis with Foot Family Meats. She said, we're not quite ready to open a storefront in Portales, but we would like to see how the meats would do in Portales, Roosevelt County. And so I was able, on a retention side, I worked with Creighton's Town and Country and they were willing to let Foot Meats put a reach-in freezer just to see what the traffic would look like in Roosevelt County. So we do now have, it's a, although a reach-in freezer, we'll call it a small business win for the community. With, this is a little bit more military affairs, but our organization does work with military affairs. We've hosted two different tours of Portales, Roosevelt County. It's very small up there, so I do apologize. But you can see the few of the places that we went on the tour. We had 13 the first time and then we had nine that came to the second tour. So this just kind of allows military families to come and just take a look at our community and see what we offer. Icon Showcase, this was actually a trip that I was asked to go on along with Clovis Economic Development and some people from Cannon Air Force Base on the housing initiatives. So I do sit on the Housing Committee for Cannon Air Force Base. And these are 3D printed houses. This was in Georgetown, Texas. So we went and we got to see them actually building the houses. I want to say from the ground up, just the frame, I think they can get one built in 18 days. So it really moves fast. However, you can't take the whole component. They don't do roof, they don't do windows. There's still all the electricity things that have to go in, but they are, they have done some military bases, they've done some barracks, and so that's why the military was interested in there is a housing need. So this company too, they have a lot of different houses. In Austin, they did a homeless, it was a, I'll call it a district, but they did some homeless housing. And so they really want to try to solve some of the housing issues globally, not just, I mean, they're down in different countries too, and these are weather resistant. So really, their front is trying all the way around. We went, as this could be, you know, something through Cannon or even in our community. I don't know that we're close to looking at it, but we went and saw it. Also, this was a civic leaders tour. There were several people. I was trying to think if we had any county. I think maybe, I think Ms. Hamilton maybe went on this tour from the county. But we went to San Antonio, Del Rio, Texas, and Montgomery, Alabama, and saw different things on their bases. So one of the things that should be coming this spring is Starbase, and that's going to be for all of our county schools, 5th grade students. It's a STEM program that they should be able to participate in through this Starbase program. So that should be coming about soon. Just a couple other events. We had a hiring event. We do partner with that with the county, city, E N M U, New Mexico Workforce Connections. We will host that every year. It's usually in the spring. And then we also had a QuickBooks training, which we had a fairly good turnout for. We will probably host another one because we have had, we have had interest in that one and QuickBooks is, it's fun. This year, we just had our first event. We hosted Summer Jam. That was just the name we gave it. It was a pickleball, basketball, youth basketball, and then open to all ages pickleball tournament with also the, some of the software that we have that we're able to use. My estimation when I did the application was 700 people. We had 53 teams between the two tournaments that ran at the same time. But the software that we were able to get off the mobile data, we had over 1,000 people that attended the tournament. So really was a great turnout and we appreciate everybody that helped and was involved in that tournament. And then just last month, we found out we became a certified economic development organization. That's through the state economic development. So with this certification, it's a $40,000 grant that we can renew annually for up to 10 years, and that's for helping with the organization. And it's basically just, you know, a star saying you're doing the things that you should be doing in your community through economic development. So there are, I believe, 12 certified organizations in the state of New Mexico. So where is our smaller community? We're definitely proud to have that certification. And just a few of the things, just to recap that we did this year, some of the recruiting events have on there are B R and E site visits, which is where we just go and meet with businesses and basically talk about retention and expansion. That's all on that one. And then just one last thing that I guess I can now announce. With our Summer Jam, our board had the idea that we'd like to start with a small tournament locally and just see if we could grow the tournament. And we did, we did have a site visit from Gus Macker and they will be, we just approved dates and we will host Gus Macker June of 2025. So anyways, it's kind of our newest fundraiser, as I take a breath to say, because it will be a lot of work, but it should bring probably 4,000 to 5,000 people to the community, part of kind of lodgers. Everybody, if they're coming from out of town, should spend the night the way the tournament's set up. It is a two-day tournament, so it's going to bring those people into our community, heads and beds, and also some G R T for the community. So anyways, happy to answer any questions.
Well, last part, the two, Madam Chair, last part, you answered my first question. Second question. Through R C C D C, how many businesses have we gotten in the past couple of years? New businesses for the county?
So for the county specifically?
County.
I was thinking outside city limits. So we have the Foot Meats that came in and then we do have, I would like to say, we should have an announcement of two to three more coming soon. Typically, it does take, and I know it sounds, when I go on the radio with Kevin once a month, he always asks me what's new. So typically, it does take about two years, kind of start to finish. So from our recruitment efforts and building our program, we're right on track, I feel like, for where we should be, although my patience says otherwise.
So I'll be reading about it then.
I sure hope so.
I hate to compare us because it's not apples to apples, but to Curry County and Clovis, like I know they're getting marshals and they just continue to grow and grow and grow. And we've been in metroplex for many, many years. And I just don't understand why the domino effect has not affected, that's not the right word, but us being able to utilize it in a positive way where we get a little bit of what they've been getting, because they're benefiting with the fact that we're microplex. And I just don't get it.
So a lot of recruitment and from what I've gone, so I've been to Austin, Nashville, and Las Vegas is the largest one. So I will tell you kind of what is disappointing is working with somebody, a company that you've recruited, they are a chain, for almost a year before the economics just did not work for their company. And so they fell off just last December. So the recruitment factor obviously takes a long period of time and then also getting them here. So a couple of different things though, is Clovis is about 40,000. A lot of places, they will give you a sheet, a book that says what are the, you know, what are the parameters that they're looking at. 12 to 18,000 is usually not within those parameters. So it's very difficult to try to recruit new business, especially chain business. That's why our B R and E is such an important component in our community. I might have given this last year, you can remind me, I think about 80% of any new growth in your community is going to come from existing business owners or expansion of their business. So only about 20% of your new growth is going to be from outside, say, you know, I'm not doing any, even throw a name out there, but a Dairy Queen or, you know, a large chain like that, you're only going to get about 20%. And on top of, from recruitment to them opening, it's typically about two years. I've been in the position just over two years. So it should come. And we start, we are starting to have some domino effect, even with our events, like we had the Summer Jam, we got Gus Macker, having the certification, having the Foot Meats. We're starting to gain some traction, but typically it's just the population. The other thing that affects a lot are your daytime, your car traffic. That's definitely a big one that's looked at, or what are your traffic counts throughout the day? Ours are obviously a lot lower than it would be in Clovis. We may be 5,000 at one place, they may be 20,000, and that's specifically what maybe one place is going to look at. So those are a few things. Also note too, some of the growth that's happening is not necessarily a recruitment effort per se. So one of the things I know we've discussed in our board meetings, sometimes we get denied before we even know we got denied. So a lot of the places, especially chain places, they have their own real estate team that is going out, they're searching for communities, they're already running their analysis, they're running their numbers, they might have just skipped right over us. So that's another one too, that they have their own real estate teams that are, most of them, that are working for them. So yes, no problem. I mean, trust me, it's, when I first started, they said, this is a very slow process, it's a long process, and I do believe them, it's very good, I enjoy it a lot, but again, my patience says otherwise, yeah. Anything else? Feel good?
Jody, you mentioned that E D D grant?
Yes.
That 40,000, what are y'all's plans to use that grant money for?
We haven't really made any thus far. It's very new. We just got the certification, we just got the grant signed and got the funding. But ideally, within the parameters of the grant, it's for recruitment, for travel, you can hire additional staff. The nice thing with the grant is it actually just goes into your operating budget. So for us, being a nonprofit, we fluctuate, you know, on our budget from year to year. So it does allow for some of that. However, it does not, I shouldn't say, they don't put limits on, oh, you have to spend 20,000 on staff and 20,000, you know, here.
Specific earmarks.
Not specific earmarks. So it does give us some flexibility if we wanted to run more programs or, like I said, some of the travel and some of the trade shows, so industry is one that we want to start looking into, that maybe we could attend one of those trade shows. And they are, they're expensive to go to and plus the travel that's with it. So we'll use for some of that, but we have not specifically said we're going to put an earmark on this, it's just general operating.
I think it's pretty neat that you received it.
Thanks.
Congratulations.
Thank you, us in Albuquerque got it this year and so their whole team took up, you know, the stage and so anyways, but it was, it was good.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Just want to comment something about the Foot, Foot's Meat Market. I went down there and bought some steaks. They're very good. And so my experience with the Foot Meat Market's been great. In conjunction with that source of meat being available, that's a great thing for our community. But that Foot Meat Market also contribute to our communities in some other ways. They supplied the steaks for the Malkone Foundation fundraiser, where Malkone Foundation raises funds to support agricultural youth throughout the state. And last year, we were able to give like $6,000 worth of scholarships to different people around the state. Foot Meat Market supplied the steaks this year. And another thing, Sid Strieback, along with Sid Strieback, he gave, bought, gave to us half price. So as you go about your community, remember that these people are supporting us and be good if we could support them in return.
And I do believe that would be great. I mean, I will not speak for them by any means, other than just we got the reach-in freezer, but it'd definitely be great to see, we like the Thunderbirds and they are not offered in the reach-in freezer. So there's some items that are not available, you know, here that are available at their store up in Clovis. So I mean, eventually if there's enough traffic and, you know, I still have people that said, oh, I didn't even know they were, they were in there. So maybe once we gain traction, that would be a storefront that would go in, cross our fingers.
Thank you for recruiting. It's good. And I don't think it competes with our other meat markets because they kind of supply a higher quality product.
Yeah, there's a lot of, and I don't want to take up, you know, a lot of the time, but one of the things that we're finding, especially from this software that we get with mobile data, it really is, shows you where your traffic goes. So how many people from 88130 shop in Lubbock, Roswell, Clovis? It kind of shows where they shop, so we can see some leakage, which is kind of where we say, okay, you know, do we need this, do we need that? Where can we bring that leakage back to our county and our community? So it's really nice to have that, but that's one thing that we'll be able to see is kind of where the traffic is and is there enough leakage outside that we can make it profitable in our community?
Thank you. Good show.
Thank you. Thank you, Jody.
All right, thank you, guys.
Great. Moving on to item five, it's public requests. If you have something you'd like to say, if you'll go to the microphone and if you don't mind, please state your name. You'll have three minutes and Mandy will do the timer. When the timer goes off, if you will, please just stop talking, don't try to keep going and run it in. If you'll please, just be respectful and stop at the three minutes.
Alan Carter. In response to Dennis Lopez's remarks about the incidents that happened at the county fair, I'm here to set the record straight. I was in a conversation with Billy Stacy when Dennis Lopez walked up and got into our conversation. As I was shaking his hand, yes, I was shaking his hand. I said, hello, Mr. Democrat. He went into a rage and jerked me towards him, causing me almost to lose my balance. All the while, he had his meal in his hand. That's when he got into a verbal altercation about the signage in the Democrat booth where they had hate under Trump's picture and also about Dennis not representing Roosevelt County in his district in the Senate election. As a commissioner, he voted for the Democrat governor's appointee, Greg Nybert, from Chavis County, and did not vote for our own Senate candidate, Pat Boone, from Roosevelt County. He continued to claim that he's not about parties, he's about Roosevelt County. But he continues to vote otherwise for self-agendas and not supporting Roosevelt County values. I then realized Commissioner Lopez was intoxicated. And I told him that I was through arguing with him, that he had no credibility. As an officer in the Republican Party, I would do everything in my power to get Fabian Munoz elected from his position that his dad, Jake Lopez, was running for. When Lopez forgot last commission meeting, that he said, and I quote, "You messed with the wrong family." Not right, Mr. Lopez. Which is a political threat. I walked away as Bill Stacy and Lopez were still arguing. All the while, he was still holding his food. About 150 yards away, I ran into Commissioner Chriswell and explained to him the incident and what had happened. He advised me since there was no physical altercation, because Lopez was intoxicated, that I could file an ethics report and I declined at that point because Lopez is going to term out. About three weeks later, when I was at the Ram football game and was confronted by his brother Victor Lopez and numerous family members, in which I was ambushed, physically attacked and called a racist and thrown drinks upon me, Portales and the Portales administration officials. The violent action by the Lopez family caused Portales School District to get a strike by the N M M A. This is when I decided to file an ethics complaint, in which I did, and filed charges on the attackers, and I filed it and had the county clerk honorize it and took it to the county commissioners and filed online on the state, with the state. This incident caused me to be trespassed against the Portales School District. Dennis Lopez and his family members have embarrassed the community of Portales, the school district, and Dennis has embarrassed the community of Portales and the school district, excuse me, the commission body and Roosevelt County.
Hello, wait, your time's up.
And this is the second time this has happened and you need to resign.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak in public comment? Did you have something you were going to say?
Yeah.
And you'll have three minutes and will you please state your name if you don't mind for the record? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Megan Lopez. Nice to meet all of y'all. I am just coming up here to say that ultimately, my dad and to everyone I speak on behalf of is an amazing, an amazing man. I know we may all have different opinions, but on my behalf, my siblings, my family, my grandparents, all of us, I just want y'all to know that he has been an amazing man, held his character, and will always be an amazing man to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? You all good? Thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on. Item six, elected officials and department heads. Mandy Park for the clerk report.
I just started a timer on myself.
I was going to say, you don't have to have three minutes.
I don't know how to turn it off. Go off in three minutes? Could just start again? Yeah, okay. My report is fairly short. We are about 18% right now. We've got 1,449 in our office as of today, another 300-ish at the Jake Lopez building. They're still going, so I don't know exactly how many they have right now. And then 120-plus returned by mail. That brings us to about 18, 18 and a half percent right now for early voting. Today was the last day to submit an absentee ballot application. Tomorrow will be the last day we can send out those ballots, but I think we actually got them all out in the mail today because we didn't get any in the last two hours. Election Day's the 5th. Yeah, I'm really looking forward to that. Yeah, yeah. Then on this article that was submitted to everybody, thank you for sharing that, by the way, with everybody. In case anybody didn't see it, go ahead and post it again. I went back and checked and the, what's, and I posted, I gave it to you in your packet, what is, what was approved on November 8th? General election was held on November 8th. We canvassed on the 12th, I think, in '22. That number was 1,694 in early. I'm not going to go through the whole canvas again. It matches today exactly what was approved on that day. What happens after? What was presented as proof of fraud is proof that I was doing the job that I was elected to do according to the statute. We do the election, you approve the canvas, and then I enter the provisionals and the hand tallied write-ins. That is the only part I did after I told you what I was going to do. So what I'm being accused of is actually proof that I did the job. So then I went and looked at 2023 just because I wanted to satisfy myself that it was also still exactly the way it was. And it is, and that number was 4670, and it's still 4670 today. Oh, no, that was '22. It was. I don't know where 23 is. 23 is this easier one, it was smaller because it was the other election. It was 1,659 on the day you approved it. It was 1,659 again on 10/15 when I looked at it. So if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them.
I do. So you made a comment. Can you clarify when you say, because it sounds worse than what it is? Can you clarify when you say that what you're being accused of, by who you mean you're being accused by?
I don't know who the accuser is.
I mean, but it's not the state, it's not any, you're not in trouble like?
No.
Okay.
The article said there was a complaint filed against the Secretary of State's office with the Attorney General and against me and against the Torrance County Clerk, and there are no such complaints on file in the Attorney General's office. But the article made it sound like there was. But the article made it sound like there was.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Mandy, the 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 figures that you just gave us are the figures that you put in our packet.
Yes. Yes, and they match what are in the um canvas for the two prior years and they match what are in the minutes for those meetings of the canvas, those two prior years.
So I'm gonna go back and ask the same question. I hope it's not rhetorical, but um where'd it come from?
I don't know. The Estancia News, somebody that.
And you have no idea? It was anonymous, so you don't want to disclose it?
It really was anonymous. There was, there was a reporter's name attached to it, but I've never heard of him.
Hmm, okay.
He didn't have a bio listed on his website.
Okay.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay. Paul?
Just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work.
Moving on. Thank you, Mandy. Court compliance.
So Hannah Jimenez. That's on me. Um I pushed her item to the next, so she is not here to report anything at this time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to sheriff. That would be Sheriff Sanchez.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. So the guys have been pretty busy. Uh the community overtime funding that the commissioner approved, they've been making good use of that. They've been attending as many games as possible. Some of the games were a little busier than others and some we have no incidents, so appreciate those games. As far as uh we hosted our first community engagement night, which was awesome. Thanks, those of you that showed up, the people that just came to participate. That was awesome. Uh Darla Reed, she was instrumental in that um event, so when you see Darla, thank her. So thank you very much. So she says she's gonna make it bigger next year, so it'll be awesome. I know we forgot some people to invite on that event and um I apologize. That was, you know, just oversight. So if we forgot anybody for next year's event, we encourage them to uh reach out to our office just so we don't forget them.
You need to move that torch and not away from it.
It's echoing really bad right here. As far as calls, so um pulled the total amount of records of call that go through dispatch this morning. Ms. Combs over at uh Dispatch was able to send me those numbers, so thank her, but so to date, they have us at five thousand two hundred and six total record of calls and that's anything from them dispatching us to a burglary, to uh shooting, criminal sexual penetration, anything in between, and also um self-initiated stuff like traffic stops, paper services, just anything. So um five thousand two hundred and six, that's a lot of of records of call. I don't want to call it record of call, but records that that um these guys are either initiating themselves or they're getting dispatched somewhere, so um quite a bit. As far as incident reports, year to date, um we've had five hundred and nineteen incident reports that the guys have actually had a call for service and that has that had to initiate an actual report being written. That's up a hundred and forty-seven reports from last year. So guys are obviously getting busier uh with everything going on. Year to date, they've had twenty-five DWIs and that includes just regular DWIs, aggravated DWIs. So they've been pretty busy as far as the DWIs. Part of that is that we have one of the deputies that's working those basically like a special shift where all he does is proactive enforcement, basically. He's going out, high-volume traffic stops and just stopping, you know, any kind of infraction that he can find out there. And it's yielded twenty-five DWI so far this year. So kudos to them for going out and and doing the job well. And I can go into some numbers on certain things. As far as, you know, like ag fling, we've had seven ag flings so far this year. And that's, you know, basically like high-speed pursuit. They don't always end in arrest. A lot, most of the time, the ag fling, the guys uh discontinue. That way they can um not violate the Safe Pursuit Act. I know we had one this weekend where a guy ended up fleeing from the guys. He ended up taking off at a high rate of speed. They discontinued because it just gets too dangerous. Later on in the evening, they seen the vehicle, tried to initiate another traffic stop. He went to run from them. Then he always, all of a sudden just started slowing down. He was running low on fuel is what happened. So um coming into town, it was fifteen miles an hour. He ended up with a flat tire, so they were able to arrest him. He was also drunk. Another DWI this weekend where the guy ended up blowing a two uh point two oh, so he was highly intoxicated. So um guys are doing a good job of getting these people off the streets. Um and I'll stand for any other questions if they'll have any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to manager, Ms. Kirk.
Okay, um I'll go ahead and start with if uh Ms. Darla wants to go ahead and talk about community night so she can kind of elaborate.
Good evening, Commissioners. I I need to go back a little bit with this community night. I think Javier and I were together at a Crime Stoppers meeting and we got to talking about let's do a national night out, which a lot of communities do. And it typically is the first Tuesday in October and August. And we had a little conversation and that, we got a thing and that's an awful hot time of year. Let's maybe look at later. So we talked about October first and uh that that that's gonna be several weeks of conversations, different people. And ended up on October eighth um because we wanted to get away from Eastern's homecoming that week of October first. So this national night out kind of turned into something a little different. We called it the community engagement night. And part of the reason, I think, and you guys were all in on the strategic plan we've done the last couple of years. And part of that was getting the county employees and particularly law enforcement more engaged with the community. People know who you are and you know who they are. And so that's why we turned it into a community night. And also there were rules about national night out that Ben Rice and I decided we couldn't follow those rules because we had to have um some of those um neighborhood watch meetings and some things like that. We we weren't really wanting to get into. So it it moved into the the uh community engagement night. We tried to get as many. The sheriff's office did an amazing uh thing, getting all law enforcement and anything kind of related because he had Cannon Air Force Base, Clovis people involved, of course, Patalas and and the county, uh some of the county uh fire departments and that sort of thing, all there. And my part of it was to work with the Roosevelt County Health Council. Let's get as many agencies and things around Patalas there. And so I went to, you know, pulling strings that way. And I think we had about seventeen vendors. I'm still gonna count like the nine-one-one center, a few law enforcement in there um that were doing games. We we asked them to do something with the people, kid games, adult games, something. And we had about seventeen groups doing that. We had the DA's office. That was kind of amazing to me because they don't typically come to our, some of our health fairs and that sort of thing. They had information on wills, how to make your will. I don't know what all they had there. Lot of good community information. And that's what it was about. All of the agencies saying this is who we are, how we can help you. And um our little booth, we gave some little giveaways. And we had a hundred and twenty-four people sign up for those. A lot of people wouldn't sign up because they thought I'm, I came to volunteer for this, to help for this. I don't want anything free. So I know that was no way the numbers that were there, but we had that many people. What I thought was very amazing about it is was people I didn't know. And I've lived in this county all my life. It was a lot of families, a lot of little kids and families. So we kind of got people there that weren't our norm. So I thought it was a good thing and I appreciate, we had commissioners there, we had our county officials there, of course, tons of law enforcement. So I thank you guys for all, that made it. That's what it was about, for you to come meet the people and them to see you. Oh, this is Tina Dixon. Okay, she's the commissioner here on the commission meetings, you know, that kind of thing. They saw face, saw we're real people. We put on our pants one leg at a time. So thank y'all for participating and we will do it again next year. I'm not sure how we'll do it. We can't do the national night out, but we'll do a community engagement, so. But thank you guys for helping, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Darla, for that.
Thank you.
We also had fire and we also had, I believe, state police that was there as well. So that was pretty exciting to have that many people.
Game and Fish, wasn't it? Wasn't Game and Fish there? Game and Fish was there?
Yeah, so pretty amazing to have so many.
It was cool.
Yeah.
Um so next thing I've had is uh we're getting geared up for our next phase of the Bonham House. Uh we're getting uh construct, they're getting uh numbers put together for construction on it. Can you not hear me on that? Sorry. So yeah, we're getting ready for the next phase for the Bonham House. I've been in talks with uh White Sands Construction and trying to get ready for that. We've been at uh myself and Sheriff Sanchez have been at a meetings for with the City of Patalas and Patalas PD, uh just trying to figure out what all we need to discuss and any issues that have come up so we can get those all worked out and and hopefully uh while we've got everything worked out, we're gonna have these more frequently. And then the biggest thing I've been working on lately is I've been on meetings and phone calls with Orsted on that Blackwater Solar. And they have an offer on the table. And uh more or less what's been, we've discussed is um they will be responsible for decommissioning the facility after thirty years. Should they default prior to the thirty years, they, the offer on the table is that they will pay out up till, up to twenty should they default. And the current offer right now is at four hundred thousand a year that will be divided amongst the county schools, the county and this uh school districts according to the statute. The offer that I went to them with was actually five hundred, so they countered back with four hundred. But the original offer was for only three hundred annually. So they've come back with and it's not set in stone yet, so we'll have to have some more discussions. But ultimately, it'll be up to you guys to make that decision when it comes down to the final numbers. If there's something there that y'all would like for me to visit with them about, please send me those questions or your concerns and I'll get back with them. And I'll be discussing with them later this week. And as far as everything else, that's pretty much all I've got at the moment.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mandy? Go ahead.
This manager, that of that four hundred thousand per year, is Texaco Schools involved with that? Are they included in that four hundred thousand?
Without actually looking to see exactly where they are, I do believe they are. What portion they're gonna get, I don't know at this time.
But they are that, so this four hundred thousand is not just for Roosevelt County and Roosevelt County Schools. It would be plus Texaco Schools along with the Roosevelt County Schools, right?
And House and Melrose. House and Melrose have some school district borders within the county. They're not physically located here, but some of our residents are in the House, Texaco and Melrose School Districts in addition to our school districts.
I'm not understanding that. That's like, well, is Tatum gonna be involved with it since they border our school district down there?
Our school district doesn't. That school district stops at the border. They don't come to Roosevelt County the way House, Texaco and Melrose do.
It's just for the school districts to come into Roosevelt County?
It's not an annexation. It's almost like because they are in our county, although ninety-eight percent of it.
I was wanting to know what all, who all, who all was gonna be involved with that four hundred thousand.
Well, and until we get a little further down the line, we'll actually, I've requested that they actually break that down in the states, how that state statute should be paid out. So we will have a formal letter that shows exactly how that should be done. And you'll see exactly how much each school district will get.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for Ms. Kirk?
Not at this time, but I can see the written document.
I can too.
And um I'm concerned about I don't know. I'm concerned about the, I think it's a good deal if you say, if you, for twenty years, if if the four hundred for twenty years, it's about eight million dollars.
I, exactly.
That's, that's great. But what I'm concerned about the equity for all the kids, when we consider the percentage-wise, the number of kids from Roosevelt County that go to Texaco School compared to the percent of the Roosevelt County kids that go to other schools, I just wonder. I don't know how that's gonna play out. What I don't want to see is have the 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 station, the electoral station in Roosevelt County and all the money go to Curry. So I I'm concerned about that. I know that we have kids in that, in Rosat, in that district is in Roosevelt County and we have kids that do go to Texaco School. I don't, I'd just like to see the kind of how the money's gonna be spread out.
I think they just need to formulate it.
So we're, that's where our next step is, but we also, uh I believe Stephen could probably show you on the map where the school, where the location is and then maybe where it fits into the which portion of that will be in that school district, so where that majority of that'll go, but.
It's all in Texaco District.
If it's all in Texaco District, then they're gonna.
That's all Texaco School District.
Then they're gonna get a majority of it.
Texaco School District comes out here to right outside Patalas out here.
Right.
Yeah.
So.
All of that up there is Texaco School.
The print of the farm is completely within the Texaco Schools. So.
Anyway, first. I'm ready for them to be here. We can ask them directly and discuss.
We can make that. We can put something together.
I think we need to get them here.
Okay.
January second.
Don't you agree, don't y'all agree that?
Yes, yes.
They need to be here. I think we need to have them here.
Yes.
Like I say, how much, how much road improvement they're gonna be doing themselves? You know, like was, like what took place off down here at Dora, when the wind turned in farm, when the wind farm come in down at Dora, they did it theirself, ex uh whoever ex, I don't care who done it, but anyway, they, they did it theirself. It wasn't the county doing it. Theirselves and stuff, and I think a lot of that needs to be taken into effect. You know, because uh those roads up there are not very good right now. I mean, they, excuse me, I think they suck up there. And uh and like I said, there's gonna be a lot of work just maintenance-wise on trying to build those roads up, getting that stuff in there. I mean, it's gonna take a lot of work and a lot of money just to get them in there.
Well, I'd just assume them move it, put the whole thing in Curry County if that's where the money's gonna go. That's what I'd like to see, but anyway, that's just.
Where exactly is the location?
Like a substation. Right over here and then there's like several acres that drop down.
Up in them sand hills.
What is it, three thousand acres?
I believe so.
Yeah.
But we don't know how many solar panels are gonna be. Are they gonna cover the whole three thousand acres? We don't know. I mean, there's a lot of questions.
I've been back in there, you know, it's seeing that there he has circles back in there and we've had trouble with wind erosion, sand and just, those roads are terrible. So that's, that's an issue. I have no more questions.
Okay. That'll be good. Do you have anything else, Ms. Kirk?
No, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Commissioners. Commissioner Greider, do you have anything?
Ma'am.
Mr. Chriswell? Commissioner Savage? Okay, I want to say.
You didn't ask me, like, wow.
But I know you're going to talk a long time, so I was going to.
Right, right quickly. Uh, it's been a while, uh, Mrs. Kirk, since we, we talked some about the, uh, the little potholes that have originated due to water leakage there on Roosevelt P between, uh, three and four on Roosevelt P. There's a couple of those things. We had some water line leaks, caused some potholes and, and it's been, I would guess, probably six weeks since that, since that happened. And we still got just filled in with Kalachi. I don't know how long it would take to repair those roads, but I would think that six weeks would probably be, should be sufficient. They're still not fixed. So I don't know.
Yeah, I know.
I don't know what's bothering her, and I'm getting a lot of calls on it.
Okay.
Okay, and then I wanted to tell you that I had turned in out there, um, north of Alida, going out towards like the Boone Ranch and, um, there's some areas out there where the trees are really, really bad. I had talked to Juan about that. We trim them every so often, but they just grow back over the road and they've knocked off mirrors, off of semis and lights and things like that. I don't know if we can just completely remove the trees. I've talked to, to Juan about that and he said part of the problem was disposal. Um, I found that the town of Alida will, um, give them some places to dispose of those trees if they want to cut them down, they can put them up there in the burn pile. Um, there's a few, they want them in different piles for sizes or whatever, but Juan will have all that information to just get rid of those trees because they are a hazard. And, um, I guess out there on the curve, there are also, a lot of the signs have been torn down on the curve out there. And Juan did go out there and, um, check into that. Whoever is yanking the signs up out of the ground left the freaking chain around the sign that they were hooking on the sign to pull it out of the ground. So anyway, they put those out and they've been shooting up signs with, um, so they've been shooting them up and then yanking them out of the ground. So we, he's going to replace some signs out there.
I'm sorry, Tina, where was that at?
Out there, you know, when you're going out past Darrell and Venetia's out there on 19, and then you go out that curve, or what is that road right there? 21, 21. And then you go around that curve out there towards Boone Ranch Road. It's right there on that curve out there. It's out towards Garland Creighton's in that when you go on around. Yeah. Okay, and then I, I wanted to say that, and you can probably elaborate more than I can about the meeting that you and I went to when they called on, and you had sent out an email to, um, for us to go to on that housing that Cannon Air Force Base was talking about doing that housing and.
So we went to a meeting with Cannon, City of Clovis and Curry County and, uh, and City of Portalis. And they discussed a housing shortage, kind of a little bit of what went with what Jody was talking about. Um, they did bring up building these modular houses or whatever, but they're wanting to go into an intergovernmental, uh, agreement with the county and with the City of Portalis to build houses. And, um, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions. They do, we know that a lot of Cannon's people were shipped out, but they're telling us that they're shipping them back and they're having a hard time finding housing, rent houses or even housing to purchase that they can afford. And, um, we are, we had a quick conversation with the City of Portalis, um, and, and I think we need to look into that. But again, we need to, not sure we really want to go into intergovernmental contracts. I don't know that that's necessarily a necess, uh, something we have to do for us to continue to build within our county. Um, not sure how that would actually benefit our county, uh, by going into an intergovernmental contract with the base.
But we would like to see more houses. I, I know I would like to see more houses and things that we could do. Remember when we back, when we used to have base housing here? And, you know, we would have more of them over here and we would get, you know, our populations up and all of that. And I would like to see us be able to do something, but again, I'm not sure I'd want this, the intergovernmental agreement like the City of Clovis has with them, but you know, the City of Clovis benefits far more from the base or even the bombing range that's in Roosevelt County. The City of Clovis benefits from that, so, but they were, the City of Clovis is the one that did invite us to go over there. And so I did ask the question because they're already in the works with them on these things of what we need to do to start the conversation to see if we want to do anything with that. So I just wanted to bring that up so that we can start that conversation if that's something y'all are interested in. And I think that's all I have. So Commissioner Lopez.
Are y'all ready for me?
We're not ready for you.
You guys have till midnight, four hours?
Back to this base deal, so are you saying that the base and City Clovis is welcoming the county, Roosevelt County?
The City of Clovis isn't.
To, to go to a housing development? Is that what they're wanting us to do? Just for the base?
No, no, they don't want it just for the base. They want it to be competitive housing, competitive pricing in housing would be available to the base, but also their comment was they want it to be just as competitive for anybody else that wants to rent.
But are they want the county to develop, to develop this housing?
They're wanting somebody.
Yeah, they don't care if it's a county that, the county, they're not saying the county needs to go out and build houses and become a landlord. Just figure out what we can do to get houses here. And one of the things they even talked about was those 3D houses that Jody talked about, those were even brought up on there because they're, they're priced right. If you can get a construction company that wants to go build them, you know, like they do the apartments and all the different things, if you can get a, a construction company that's willing to go build houses for X amount of dollars that fits into what they have for a budget, it would also work for people around here and get a better deal on property.
I understand it now.
Yeah, okay.
It's collaborating with money involved at the end of the day. But anyway.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Lopez.
Um, grassroots, I was going to talk about grassroots, that was in my agenda item, but I'm going to skip that because I don't think that it's worthy of me talking about it or wasting my breath. The fact of the matter is where grassroots were affiliated with the party, obviously as county commissioners, but I wouldn't have gotten one thing done in seven and a half years if it wasn't for y'all. And you guys have supported me wholeheartedly and I love y'all for that, wholeheartedly. Thank you. Second thing I do have to address, and I'm going to do a quote from my father-in-law, something he told me before he passed, you know, he, he gave his hand to me, uh, gave my wife's hand to me, um, many, many moons ago, Billy Woolley. And he told me one day, we were still students at New Mexico State, he said, kiddo, calls us kiddo, right, Megan? To the, well, he did, but anyway, he said, kiddo, you can sign a lot of contracts, I can tell in your lifetime. I said, Billy Woolley, I am. He said, but the most golden contract that you'll ever sign is a handshake and man's word, and that's the most golden. And if you, it's not worthy of me looking up two or three meetings ago when we want to share love after a conversation I had with a certain person in here. And you know what? It was golden to me, but it's less than copper in my eyes right now. Thank you. And then now, BNSF, do you have that video ready? Thank you. I'm going to share this with you guys real quick and all the puzzles are going to come together after the video's done, how it's going to benefit the county, okay? It's about one minute.
We're at.
Um, so with that, I did pass the baton because it's a municipal, uh, municipal government jurisdiction. And I just texted the mayor pro tem and she did address it and I sent all the info to him because they're the ones that, the ball's in their court. Uh, when I talked to my very good friend, Rafer Nichols, who's my, my son's partner, they're two offices away from each other in corporate at Denver, um, who said, well, the ball already started, I mean, the ball's already in the court. It's up to the city, but I'll need you to talk to the county commission and let us know any needs that you might, you guys might have within the crossings. I know Commissioner Greider and I have dealt with two BNSF issues this past year and I hope they got remedied. Uh, we did everything with some cattle ranchers that were having troubles with, uh, access, bringing in cattle feed and taking out cattle. And I think we, we did remedy it, right? If memory serves me right.
They're still working on it.
Yeah, okay. So with that, and then I know for a fact Commissioner Dixon's district had some individuals while I was in office that were worried and concerned that at night, whether it's kids or elderly, elderly, whenever there's no signals or nothing to indicate that there's a train, if it's really dark, it's very difficult for individuals to see that there's a train, especially if they're distracted, even typical, just common conversation. So what he asked, uh, Mr. Nichols, Rafer, is that he will be willing to do a Zoom meeting with you guys. He'd come in person, but he just hadn't newborn, um, and his wife wouldn't be very keen about him coming over in person. But he did say that, um, he'd be willing to do a Zoom meeting, hear you guys out. And right as we speak, they're doing the research data analysis on this whole district. My son covers from Denver down Texas east. He covers Denver, New Mexico, Arizona and west, but their focus right now is in this railway between here, Carlsbad and everything. So I would ask Annette and my fellow commissioners to please give them the opportunity to come, do a Zoom meeting with you guys and ask residents if they need any, any assistance and or concerns, no guarantees, but the monies are there. BNSF, the monies are there. There may be some matching, but I would fight for them to fully fund it, if you guys know what I mean. I mean, that'd be the best case scenario. But it is for the betterment of Roosevelt County residents. So that is the main reason that I am pushing this. And I know that you guys appointed me as, as the BNSF rep, so I appreciate that. I thank you guys. And, you know, I talked to Madam Chair today and she's all, it's not your last meeting. I said, I ain't going to throw all this on you guys and Annette, December, whenever our last meeting is, so it's not premature, I'm just giving you guys heads up. So with that, next item, DOT, Department of Transportation. I talked to Francisco Sanchez yesterday, uh, district engineer, unrelated matters. Um, they had a major accident, I mean, a major, um, rains in Chavis County and this and that, and my wife needed to take the door kids to, um, to some meetings in Artesia. So I called him and I just said, hey, what's the access to Artesia? So he let me know all the access routes, everything. The bridge was shut down between Roswell and Artesia, so, so forth, so, and so on. And, um, we started talking a little bit about county business and stuff. And I would really appreciate if we as a board of commission would reach out to him with a letter of appreciation to him and his team. Because about seven years ago, I attended their meeting and it was an open table with, um, Tim Parker, and he was the deputy, uh, district engineer at the time. And they said that there had never, never in the history of DOT had a county commissioner go address concerns before them in an open table conversation. And they said, we'll be honest with you, you guys are not even in the radar for any kind of projects. I said, well, we need to be. Don't forget about Eastern New Mexico and Roosevelt County. Since then, we got Maine fixed, we got Westphal fixed, we got Leamington Highway between Wells Fargo and, um, Farmers Market fixed. And they've done everything that they can from their end. They've been so instrumental, they've collaborated and they're just great, great group of people in our district. And in a tune of wad nets thus far, $3 million in a couple of years, two, three years that they've allocated for county roads, guys.
Yes.
Airmarked and sunsetted. And I think that we need to give them a shout out and just, you know, just maybe a simple letter. And I'm going to pass these cards on to Annette because I am passing the torch. If you guys can hand them to Annette, uh, that's the liaisons and the deputy engineer that comes to our area, they're presented here. And I'm going to give you Francisco's direct number, um, so that you can contact him as well. He's willing to come over and just come, have a sit down with us during one of our meetings and just to have that ongoing collaboration with him and his team. They're great people, they're doing a lot for Roosevelt County and I think that they really like us. They really do. They've done a lot for us. Okay, Annette, this is for you. ISD, Income Support Division. You know that Madam Chair and myself have, I went there on Friday and they don't have the offices out in the open anymore. I have no idea where they have them, but I would love for you to keep watch on that because our Roosevelt County residents, our students at Eastern, they deserve privacy when they're vulnerable and they need to seek assistance as young students, young parents, the elderly, whomever it may be. It's a very vulnerable situation that they're in and for their privacy rights to be violated when they have to be interviewed in an open office area in front of strangers, just please keep a watch on that.
I've reached out to the city to also look for office space, so.
Thank you.
They're looking as well.
Thank you. I don't know where they're at now, but they were not there. I went there Friday.
I don't know where they are.
Um, Fairgrounds, hmm, save the best for last. That's had a, that's had a really special place in my heart, Commissioners. It has for many, many years. And I want to thank the board, Patrick and Ryan, I want to thank them and all of their team because they have collaborated with us. We've worked so hard together and I know that we've, we're done with that two out of five phases, right? With all the monies that are allocated. I will not be here, I'll depart. Somebody's going to take credit, either Jake Lopez or Fabio Munoz, somebody will. That was a joke, guys. But anyway, the Fairgrounds.
But you did get the fence up.
Yes, I did. Anyway, um, Fairgrounds, I want to just see that go through fruition because I'd love this county, I love this city, and I want to see the final, the final phase in that Fairgrounds because it does hold a special place in my heart. And you guys are going to be so happy at this, probably Commissioner Savage may be the happiest because he said, you know what? We need to focus on our county roads, not Lime Street. So I am divorcing Lime Street as of today, Commissioner Savage. So I'm going to take, I'm going to take my barrels. So I'm going to take, I'm going to take my barrels and I'm going to store them.
Yeah, put them on P.
But anyway, with that being all said and done, you know, Lime Street, that is not a county initiative. The county did their part, BNSF did their part. And you know, city may be struggling. I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk for them on their behalf. I, I, I will not undermine or overstep my boundaries. But, you know, Lime Street would be nice now that we're enhancing the fairgrounds so much when we have all these folks coming in from the county and all over the place to have the smooth road to go into and no puddles. But anyway, lastly, can I offer space? I think we need to really continue to collaborate. And I can't stress enough because I did it back in 2000 through 2008, that we need to get GRTs. And I know Sid called me, I don't know if he called any of you guys, but we really need to see about getting GRTs on all, anything and everything that goes on at the base. And I would hope that you guys, my fellow commissioners and whoever takes our place, and I know Malin has his place, I mean, his hardened right place because he knows the county, he loves the county and he knows all about it. So I'm not worried about Malin, you know, so I just wish that you guys would just keep that in mind. And with that, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay.
You mentioned the Chavis County incident down here this past weekend. Have they called up, does the county, Chavis County called up wanting assistance or anything?
They haven't tested yet.
I've talked to Bill Williams a couple of times because he's texted me and he did text me at one point saying that they may need some assistance with roads or equipment and things. I did talk to Juan and Juan said for me to send them his contact information. They said when it dried out enough that they could actually do something, they would. And I told them that Juan would be available or equipment that he could call.
I think that's a, your flashlight's on, sir. Anyway, I think we need to keep Chavis County in our prayers and to, if they do call up for assistance, I think we may need to apply for that because it may, we might need their assistance one of these days up here. And I know that's a terrible thing that's happened down there. And yes, there was a little warning a couple of days, but nobody had that kind of thoughts of that kind of devastation that happened down there. Those feet were in my prayers. And thankfully, I know there was one live loss and thankfully there wasn't a lot more. And thank the Lord for that down there. But I do think if they, if they was to call, they have my blessing and I can't say for the rest of them, commissioners, thank you have my blessing.
Most definitely.
Assistance down there.
All right, everybody's finished, we'll move on to item seven, Old Business. Discussion and consideration of the Clean and Beautiful Grant Program Agreement, Ms. Weems and Ms. Kirk.
Good evening. I reached out to our program manager with Clean and Beautiful on the grant award that we received originally for the turf out here at the front. And we told her that we presented it and it did not pass. And she wanted us to reconsider. She said that she wanted us to have the money, that if the vision has changed, that we just have to accept it as is and we can request a scope of work change. And the grant is not for a whole lot. We were awarded the $12,025 with a 25% match and the match is in kind. And it's a little over $3,000 that we can use in kind. So it's not going to cost us any money. So I just wanted to give you that update.
Okay. Thank you.
We, we have changed kind of what we would like to do. We, we will be asking that you please approve the contract when we get to it. We will not be going, of course, moving ahead with the turf. We've decided to go with sod in some of that area and then sod or reseed. And then we're looking at doing additional upkeep and trying to beautify the front of the courthouse in that old, the idea at this point is to redesign the front of the courthouse in that old flower bed. And then there's some other vases flower that we'd like to move and we'll just repurpose those items either at the fairgrounds or someplace else.
How is that going to work with the sod or grass and the water issue?
We're going to go with the same kind of grass that's already in there, which is already the, it is drought resistant. So it's the type of grass that we will be watering very minimally. And we're going to change the sprinkler heads that are already there. So that way there'll be a lot more, and that'll be on us. But for us to replace the handful of sprinklers and fix a couple of the issues that are there, it's not going to cost us anything more than just a couple of hundred dollars to fix those and then have the watering issue that we need. And it's going to be low water.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about, if the citizens of Portales can't water their yards, how's the county going to be able to water the yard here at the courthouse?
They are, it'll be minimal.
Yeah, but the citizens of Portales are not allowed to water their yard. As far as I know, am I right or am I wrong on that? So they are allowed.
No longer.
There was a time, there was a time where they were not allowed at all. And that's just a concern for me. I'm, I, like I said, I'm all in about the turf to show the citizens of the county and citizens of Portales that we will do our part to conserve water. And so I am all about the turf and, and that's just my opinion, so.
Well, we just, we couldn't afford the turf. It's the reason why we're not going, moving forward with it. The idea of when it was originally set up, it was with the idea that there was a second grant that would be coming with it. And we were denied the second grant. And therefore we, and the amount on that grant was 20?
It was like 26,000. It was from a private funding source. It was a company through the wind farm and we applied for it. And they'd already expended all their funds in Roosevelt County and they said we could apply for it next year. But the timing with that, being able to apply for it and the Clean and Beautiful, they aren't, they're not going to coincide.
The grass that's already up in the front has been maintaining itself.
Well, I just like, I just think we need to set an example for the community and for the county on the water conservation part, and that's just my opinion.
If we approve this grant, that doesn't necessarily mean we're going to go with the, the seed or whatever, does it? Or if we approve this today, when we get down to it, does that mean that we're agreeing to the grant, the seed you're wanting to do or the sod?
Well, we had to come up with a plan rather quickly. Regardless, we could always go with seed and it'd still be, I mean, the minute, it would still be minimal on that side. The other idea with the grant that we've wanted to do is it would pay for putting a couple of trash receptacles that have to be made out of recycled materials on the ends of the courthouse. We've talked about also doing a couple of bench, but again, it'll have to be recycled. There's a metal bench over here on the end that we'd like to move maybe to the fairgrounds or something, but we'd like to put something more permanent there for some people to sit. And then of course to utilize the, some of the money to fix the front of that old flower bed that's covered in rocks right now. And that would be minimal with, we were talking about putting in anything that would be drought resistant flower beds in the front.
I'd rather use the money to do something besides plant grass. But that's just me. Okay. Anybody have anything else? Okay, moving on to item eight, New Business. Well, actually it's nine, Resolutions, Ordinances and Proclamation. Item 9A, Request for Approval of Joint Resolution 1-2024 Concerning Increasing Medical Care in New Mexico Through Participation in Multi-State Compact. Mr. Greider.
Yes, ma'am. This is a resolution that's been passed already by Clovis, Curry County and Portales. And this is just trying to open the door so we can have more professional doctors come in across the state line or something. And I'm not sure what it is, but the way they're licensed, they can come in through the state and we can have more doctors available right here.
I move to approve agenda item 9A as presented by Commissioner Greider.
I'll second, oh, really second. Okay, got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, thank you. 9B, Request for the Approval of Joint Resolution 2-2024 Concerning Increasing Psychological and Behavioral Health in New Mexico Through Participation in Multi-State Compact. Commissioner Greider.
Yes, basically the same thing. This, what we're doing is, it's been passed again by the other counties and towns. And we've already showed our, where we support this in the behavioral health. So anyway, for that I've made the motion to pass.
Second.
Got a motion in a second for item 9B, Commissioner Greider.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Item 9C, Request for Approval of a Resolution 2024-37 Opposing Compliance with the amended 2021 International Energy Conservation Code adopted as the New Mexico Residential and Commercial Energy Conservation Code by the New Mexico Construction Industries Commission. Commissioner Dixon. So this is, it's in your packet, but basically, and just like Commissioner Greider's, a lot of the other counties around us are passing this. It's because we do not want to have to have new or remodels. They're now requiring that they have to have chargers, charging stations in them. And we're just opposing that we do not want that to have to happen in new or, and it's for commercial or residential. And so I don't think somebody should have to put a charging station in their house when they're building a house, they don't want to.
With that, I move to approve agenda item 9C.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. Item 9D, Request for the Approval of Resolution 2024-38 Cost Sharing, The Preparation of the Amicus Free Supporting the State of Utah's Petition to the Federal Government Challenging the Retention of Unappropriated Lands. We've all read up on this and it's about taking the control back from the government and putting it back into your state so that the, your counties and your state can have control of your unappropriated, like your BLM land and things like that. So I was going to go ahead and I wanted to just go ahead and bring the Utah's original petition. And then I also sit on the board for the New Mexico-Arizona Coalition. And Howard Hutchins, which is the director of that, is also on the board for the Utah for the, the national land. So anyway, we were talking about in, if we do it through New Mexico-Arizona, it will not exceed $500. The other way it was going to be $1,000 per person that got in on it. This way, it's only going to be not to exceed $500. It'll just depend on how many get in and it is just to oppose that. I'll stand for any questions.
With that, I move to, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 90 as presented by Madam Chair.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Lopez?
Yes.
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 Motion carries, thank you. Item 9E, Consideration of Revision of the Proclamation Declaring November 16th, 2024 as a Walk to End Alzheimer's Day in Roosevelt County. Ms. Kirk.
So we approved the proclamation at the last meeting. After it was approved, Curry County came back and said they are changing the hours to, from 10 to noon instead of 10 to 2:00. And so I've asked that it be revised and approved.
Does Commissioner Dixon have to read, read the whole proclamation again?
Would y'all like for her to read it again?
I move we approve it.
Second.
I got a motion in a second. Commissioner Greider.
Yes.
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 Motion carries, thank you. And thank you guys for not making me read that. And Dennis, if I'd have known you'd be like that, you wouldn't have got so much time last time. So 10, Contracts, Agreements and Procurements. 10A, Request for the Approval of the Contract for Economic Services with the Roosevelt County Community Development Incorporated. That would be our 15,000, correct?
Correct. And since technically I wouldn't have to have y'all approve that because of the amount, this is my first time with y'all, I would prefer that y'all approve that.
I move we approve.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. 10B, Request for the Approval of the Clean and Beautiful Grant Program Agreement with the State of Tourism Department for $12,025 and 10 cents.
Good evening again. This is the Clean and Beautiful Grant Agreement in its original format with no revisions. We can accept it as is and try to come up with the additional funding. Or we can accept it as is and come up with a new plan and request a change to the scope of work that it has to be completed by June 30th of 2025.
Okay. With that, I will make a motion to approve item 10B.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 10C, Request for the Approval of Purchase of a Smith's Detection B Scan Body Scanner Per Sole-Sourced Authorized Distributor Command Sourcing, Inc. That is a lot. It is.
So, so this is about the detention center's body scanner.
We need you at the microphone.
Okay.
Without attitude.
So this, yeah, good luck. So this is the detention center's body scanner that we have searched and searched and searched for. I had Carla do most of the work. I just am like, I want this. And she's like, well, let's look at it. So I'll let her take it off from there.
Yes, we've looked into several different options. And we're not sole sourcing the body scanner because there are several brands out there, there's several. It is the company itself and their sole source of the proprietary maintenance and ongoing with it. And so I just ask for your permission to, we did follow the procurement code and we did put on the sunshine portal through the state and there were absolutely no protest.
I move we purchase the body scanner.
Got a motion in a second, any discussion? Did you have something you want to say, Commissioner?
How much is it?
And we did reach out, or Shayla did in the beginning of the process, and they range anywhere from that all the way up to like 310,000.
I've got a motion in a second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any media? Not the media. Do what? No, I don't, I've never seen your publication. Do you have something? Okay. Item 12, do we need an executive session?
We do not.
Awesome. Let's go bowling.
Meeting is adjourned.
So what is it?